Remember. Um, yeah, we'll go ahead and get started because we only have thirty minutes scheduled this, but I also don't want trustees to miss it if they can be here. So, thank you so much. Sergeant Govani, right Sergeant?
Nope, just a patrol officer.
Okay, Officer Govani and. Intern Chief or Acting Chief Leventhal, thanks for joining us tonight for this presentation. And I asked because you know, it felt like once I learned about this type of training and your roles in it, I just thought that the whole board would appreciate. A presentation of it as we go into future agenda items as far as the police study. Recommendation, so we're only scheduled for thirty minutes tonight, so this will be a presentation only, and then if if folks have questions. I'm going to ask that they submit them in writing afterwards because we won't have time for discussion. All right, I will hand it over.
All right, well, thank you. So just wanted to give you a kind of a quick overview, a quick update on our EDI related training that. We have been working on within the Police Department itself and with the focus. Primarily touching on stuff that we've covered since the Y study was released at the end of last year. And I do want to point out that one thing that he mentioned just very briefly in the original study. Was like one sentence that he touched on, we did complete a training back in twenty eighteen. That was EDI related in the area of fair and impartial policing. And something that all of our officers went through and we'll touch on a little bit about what the different aspects of what's covered in that. But since that training, Officer Govani and I have both went on and become instructors. For fair and impartial policing and it's something that we can roll out within the department. And continue to do periodic updates on in the coming weeks and our coming months, I should say, within the department here. But also, since the the study has been released, we had completed two two trainings in the area of de-escalation. And another EDI related training that's called racial intelligence. And Officer Govani is an instructor for that as well. We were the first department within the North Shore to have completed that training, all of our officers have gone through that training. And we are also making Officer Govani available to the rest of the North Shore Police Departments. So that we can roll this training out throughout the entire North Shore. So because also Govani is an instructor within multiple areas here. I would like for him to kind of get more into the nuts and bolts of the training. He certified to teach our de-escalation program, our racial intelligence program, and then also he and I. With the fair and impartial policing, so I'll turn it over to him and jump in a little bit here and there if need be.
All right, hi, everybody, thanks for letting me be a part of this. I'm just going to jump into a little bit about me really quick before I get into it. As Intern Chief Leventhal had said, I'm a trainer in multiple areas, racial intelligence, de-escalation through force science. I'm also certified defensive and arrest tactics instructor, which is going to tie into one of the de-escalation topics that we brought up. And I'm also racial intelligence instructor among a couple other things. I've been with the department for four years now, before that I came from West Milwaukee, so I've been an officer for roughly around seven and a half. So we're going to get into it, I'm going to share my screen and just let me know if everybody can see it. Can everybody see that?
Yep, looks good.
Perfect, um, so as Tom had already stated, we did go through this training for fair and impartial policing. Briefly in twenty eighteen, I believe it was about, how many hours was that, Tom, about eight hours or so?
Yeah, that was a full day.
Yep, full day, eight hours, so it wasn't based off of the curriculum you're seeing here. It was through a different type of curriculum, but the same concepts do apply. This is actually known through the nation, it's been utilized to the nation through various departments. Is probably one of the more premier fair and impartial policing classes that we that they put on. And we were very fortunate enough to go to this in Kenosha, so there's two of these, there is one for patrol officers. And there's another one for supervisors, which is basically the same concepts, except for supervisors, they're looking for a little bit more. Which we can touch on in this, so. The basics of fair and impartial policing was to get an understanding of what traditional understandings are and what implicit biases are. So through this, as you can see here on the screen, it talks about what traditional understandings are. Which is discrimination only caused by ill intentioned people who have animus towards groups. And the bias is conscious and the discriminatory behavior is deliberate, so this is for. People know what their biases are and they're acting upon it, which is what we also call explicit biases. Implicit bias, it impacts everyone, everyone has implicit biases. It impacts well intentioned people outside of the conscious awareness. And discriminatory behavior is not based on the animus and it's not deliberate, so what this means is. Implicit biases can come from multiple different areas, you know, I could speak about this for a couple hours or so. But basically to get the understanding of what this training is about, you need to know those two things, the traditional understanding is also known as explicit biases. And implicit biases, which we all share. So the main points of this training is based off of those two factions. It's to understand that maybe you have biases from watching TV, from growing up in a certain neighborhood. From people that you hang around and it's to get the understanding that you shouldn't act upon those biases. That for some reason they were there and you need to be aware of why they're there and what they are, so that way you don't act upon it. And start expressing it explicitly, so. There we go, so the learning objectives, like I said, was to understand what your biases are. And then articulate how those implicit biases can affect your perceptions of behavior and through this, through the training I went through. And Tom went through it as well, they basically have all these different scenarios. There's a lot of discussion within the class and these scenarios that they give us, we actually can utilize and use. For our training back at the Police Department. And it's it's more or less, it could be hands on, you can design your own scenarios, they give you a lot of worded scenarios. And the the scenarios change based on people's understanding and questions. It also discusses how biased police impacts community members in the law enforcement organization. Obviously biases can play a role in a lot of different things as everybody is seeing nationally and you know. Nearby and different areas, not just with law enforcement, but with different businesses as well. And it talks about incorporating it with the justice system and how we utilize it in law enforcement. And the last skill that they want us to touch on was demonstrating these skills and tactics. So through those scenarios, people have to go through those scenarios and they have to check off on those things before they are. I guess quote unquote certified and fair and impartial policing. So this was pretty much when I went through it, there was about thirty of us from all different agencies in the Wisconsin area. Not just in Milwaukee, but it was primarily put on in Kenosha, so it was a bunch of different police officers down there, it was a very open concept. Training, we all got to talk with each other and that's what we're going to be bringing back with us, we have not put this. Training on yet, just because the way that fair and impartial policing does it. Is that it has to be pretty much eight hours nonstop and with the the amount of hours that we don't have right now. We will be able to put it on soon, hopefully, once we get more people back from injuries and other things. But once they come back, we should be able to plug this in at some point. But again, like I said, we haven't done this because it's an eight hour long class, it has to be nonstop, they have a lot of different. Points that we have to hit on for people to be determined as certified. And that's pretty much it with that fair and impartial policing, Tom, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, other than we went through this training back in twenty eighteen and we just haven't had a chance to go back and do a refresher for. The one or two people that we have hired since then that have not gone through it. And as as a refresher for everybody else, but. The training was actually really well received within the department when. Once we we got through the material, I think there was a little apprehension going in as to they weren't certain as to what the material was going to be, well, it's going to be covered. But once we got through it, I think people really, really enjoyed it and it was really refreshing to them to to have the material that was presented that. It wasn't like they were getting beat over the head and browbeaten to things, it was it was really awakening for people. To realize that there was things that they may not even be consciously aware of that they were learning about in that class, so that was outstanding.
And that's it for fair and impartial policing, so to move on to the next one. Was a brief de-escalation. Presentation that I put on for the department, like I said, I'm a defensive and arrest tactics instructor through the state of Wisconsin. And through that use of force falls under my umbrella of things that I do. So I was asked to put this on, this was during the wake of the George Floyd incident. And so with that being said, we'll go right into that. So. This was basically put on with. There's not a real de-escalation, I guess, separate class to the state of Wisconsin. De-escalation is brought into a bunch of different topics within the Wisconsin State Manual for Law Enforcement Standards Board. And it's kind of spread out and in defensive and arrest tactics, they briefly touch on it in numerous different ways and it's usually on hands on applications. So that's, I kind of took from that manual and put it in here and we did pretty much open discussion. So when the George Floyd incident came out, we, myself and members of the department had very open conversations about it. About de-escalating and when it's appropriate and how can we do that? And among that you can see here in this definition, it just talks about what force is and what our goal of using force is at that time. I'm not going to go too much into this, this is just basically an overview of again, why we're using force and what it's used to do. It's not used to, you know, prove a point or anything like that, if you see at the bottom, it, those are the five. Sole reasons why officers use force in the state of Wisconsin. And so we were making sure we were touching on these boxes when we were looking at the George Floyd incident. Which was one of the things that, like I said, that was the main topic of why we did this. So it also came up with justification desirability right here, I don't know if you guys can see my mouse on the screen or not, but. Underneath decision making talks about justification desirability and that's one of the main things we harped on. The Wisconsin Law Enforcement Standards Board touches on a few things, but it doesn't give very. Definitive definitions on stuff as opposed to the next training I'm going to show you. So it was more or less, we were putting together a PowerPoint, trying to get a realization of what's going on in the world. And trying to apply that to what we do without knowing the correct terms and topics and tactics that we wanted to incorporate in it. And through that, Tom allowed me to go to the next subject we're going to talk about, which is another de-escalation thing, but. The main point on this was to talk about officer override, you know, knowing when. If you do have these feelings that, you know, things are getting over to the top and it's starting to boil over, you know, we do have a duty to intercede. And prevent each other from doing something that could be costly to us or another person. So we had a bunch of different discussions about that as far as. You know, what feelings are and being able to articulate and realize when your partner or anybody else you're out on the street with, if they're getting. A little overwhelmed that maybe, hey, it's okay to be tapped out. Tom, am I missing anything that you can remember from this training specifically?
I think you're hitting most of the points, I mean, I really want to stress that one of the things that we we covered was, in addition to the duty to intercede. Was the whole notion of justification versus desirability and that's so much even in a use of force related aspect. But in general, within our, within our day to day duties that just because we're justified in doing something, doesn't mean it's always something that we should do. Or is desirable for us to do and it's a topic that we spend a lot of time talking about internally. Regarding that, yeah, just the overall idea of we may be legally justified to do something, but is it really the right thing to do, is it really a good idea to do it?
Yeah, it comes in with a term called lawful but awful. You know, and this could be applied to numerous different things that we talked about, you know, is it, is it justified to? When we get called for people that are homeless, that are sleeping in stairwells at Metro Market or. Sleeping on the sidewalks and people want welfare checks done on them and, you know, are they technically violating the law by trespassing, sure. Are we justified to possibly arrest them and issue them citations, sure, but is it desirable to do that, does it prove any points? You know, there's, there's more going on here, so we talked about those things, we talked about different resources or different options that we have that we could do instead of. Always jumping to arresting someone or anything like that and for the most part, we we didn't have to talk about that specifically. Because we don't do those things usually unless there's other circumstances involved, but that's just one of the many examples that you could utilize with that. So after realizing and doing that short PowerPoint with the whole department. We really realized that there was, there's got to be some better material out here that specifically dealt with de-escalation. And this is by far probably one of the best trainings I've ever gone to. And it's one of the things that I'm most proud of going to. Force Science put this on in Minnesota and Minneapolis, still during the same time of the civil unrest that was going on there. And myself and a few other people from the North Shore Police Departments went to this training. And it by far is arguably one of the best trainings that I think anybody could ever go to. And what this basically talks about is de-escalating a situation, not always necessarily physical. But it pertains to law enforcement specifically, most of the de-escalation stuff out there was more or less. You know, backing off, being hands off, this is more or less understanding the entire portion of what you're dealing with. Dealing with people, dealing with what they're bringing to the table, you know, is there a lot more going on? And they touch on talking about people in crisis. So the goal here is to improve law enforcement's ability to manage human beings by enhancing our skills. Establishing contact, building rapport and gaining influence to achieve a police objective. And it's to teach officers how to address the need of a person in a time of crisis and what they mean by a time of crisis, it could mean anything. It could be a person that is upset that they're being pulled over after they just had a long day at work and now things are just boiling over to the top. It could be a person that's experiencing a mental health breakdown and they need help and they don't know where to go. It could be a person that's upset, it could be a person under the influence of anything, it can be anything. And it's basically what this goal was, was to teach us how to recognize when a person is going through something in crisis. And how to utilize our skills as officers and enhancing those skills in order to establish some sort of connection with them. To get them to calm down, listen to what we're telling them. We're listening to what they're telling us and having an open dialogue to get them to do what we need them to do without it being any type of force being involved. And sometimes force is necessary to achieve an objective, but this is to stress that if we have time. And if we can utilize these skills, it's probably going to produce a better outcome. So with that said, it's talking about, once we understand the thoughts, feelings and behaviors of a person. We can then start implementing these skills to de-escalate a person in a situation, so you know. It could be something as simple as being on a traffic stop and someone is upset that because they feel that we stopped them because of their race. And it's understanding that, you know, that's not the reason why they were stopped, but this is what they feel. And we can't take someone's feelings away from them, so talking with them, we have that time. And as long as it's not amped up to a situation where we can have a good dialogue with them. Talking and understanding what they're going through and then reafferring and reassuring them that this is the reason, this is what's going on. And then just being open and honest with them. One of the main things that they talk about is that people like to know why things are being done. And sometimes in the past, law enforcement hasn't always been the greatest on giving the why. And they talk about if you can give the why, give the why, because sometimes that brings the situation down. In this training, they talk about dealing with people that suffer from mental health problems. They talk about dealing with race, they talk about dealing with, you know, the younger generations coming up, dealing with older generations. It kind of just covers and encompasses a large group of people. And trying to basically instill in us that as long as we have time and distance and it's not putting anyone in jeopardy or risk. Listen, have these conversations, talk to them. You know, tell people, as long as they're willing, tell people that, hey, we'll talk to you after and let you know what's going on if you want to talk about this more in depth. And again, like I said right here, this is their their model, so I can only see my face on the side, but. So when talking about their model for de-escalation, it talks about utilizing, making sure a scene is stabilized, so. You know, no weapons involved, no risk to anybody or any other person or themselves at that time or to yourself. Using that time and distance, using a risk assessment, which is, there's a sheet, but I can't show it on here. There's certain things that they allow me to show and certain things that they don't allow me to show due to copyright reasons. And then understanding their behavior and then understanding our own emotions at that time, if we don't think that we're up to the challenge. Or if we're not physically ready or mentally ready, then maybe it's okay to tap on and get somebody else who's able to do that for us. And then once we have all those things, we're able to come up with good choices for persuasion and good communication to influence that behavior. To get them to get what we need them to get done. So that's it on de-escalation, Tom, anything you got on that?
Yeah, if I can just throw in a little bit on the de-escalation one, one of the things to. Really kind of keep in mind and there is some of the stuff that we also covered in there, you know, strategies about. Preventing recurrence of issues or doing things to follow up regarding the situation that you had to try to help. Make sure that things aren't going to reoccur from there. And included in the de-escalation training, there was a lot of realistic hands on scenarios. That basically forced the the learner to go through and make decision points. On on what the material that they had just been presented and if they made the right choices, things went better in the scenario. If they made the wrong choices, things escalated instead of de-escalating. And so it was a real good way to reinforce the material that was being presented within the classroom.
Yeah, every person that went through this training had to go through a scenario and it was involving everyone, so. Other people got to see it and we all had a debrief at the end of it to talk about, this is what happened. This is what would have happened if you didn't do it this way. And again, this is something that we were the first agency to put on, actually, I went with other North Shore agencies. But we were the first agency in the North Shore to actually do this and put it on first. And then the North Shore started putting it on and actually this training went very well. That if anybody's familiar with crisis intervention training through NAMI. NAMI actually wants to utilize this model from the North Shore perspective and to their own training now to now teach hundreds of law enforcement officers. Around the state regarding this, so it's, it's a very good training. It's, it can be anywhere from four to eight hours, dependent on the time and restraints that you can have. And. With that being said, there's a lot, like I said, there's a lot of conversations that had to have been had in this, this training. So it wasn't just me standing in front of a class giving a PowerPoint off, it was a lot of video scenarios in there. There was a lot of dialogue and conversation, there were a lot of tests that were taken in the middle of this. Just to kind of see where people were at with it and what their understandings were.
Yeah, I'm very excited about the possibility of this partnership between our agency and and the NAMI people with the CIT aspect of things. And, you know, included in some of the training material that has gone through the department here, gone on through the department within the last couple of months. As we did send two additional officers through the full CIT training, so we were getting slowly getting everybody through it. But with the trainings that are limited amount of the trainings that are available, but I think that this partnership that Ali's talking about, that they've approached us about. Is something that's going to be very beneficial to not just our department, but all the agencies in the North Shore.
Agreed. And for the last one was racial intelligence put on the right, by the right academy. With this one, this was a two day class that I had to go to, a lot of teachbacks and things and. There we go, okay, so what this mainly spoke about, for the most part, it was actually half and half. It was kind of a officer wellness type of approach encompassed with a lot of different things that you see on the screen. So the three components that made up racial intelligence training was emotional intelligence. So us understanding how our emotions affect us and not just us, but others. And that's where that social intelligence came in, so being emotionally aware of what we are and where we are in our daily. Day to day activities as law enforcement officers and then bringing that to the table when we go out on the street and dealing with other people. Now we're taking on, you know, not just our problems, but their problems. And now we have to understand how we can bridge that gap and understand how we can keep our emotions in check. And now help them keep their emotions in check and then together that kind of encompasses the racial intelligent thing. So the social and emotional part of it was. Officers had to basically learn what triggered them, what got them upset. So it kind of actually went hand in hand with that fair and impartial policing. Whereas those two subjects aren't included within each other, they're basically a derivative of each other. With racial intelligence, it spoke more or less about how to interact with people once you understood that. The fair and impartial policing basically was getting us to realize all these different things that were going on around us. And this portion is now using that to to now implement that in our day to day lives. So officers were given a, I don't have it with me since I'm from home today, but. Officers were given a little bag and within that bag were multiple different tools that the right academy showed. And again, I can't show it due to copyright reasons on the screen, but within that. It basically gives tools when you realize that they can carry with them in their squad cars, when you realize that, you know, maybe I had a bad day at home. How to look at these things and now say, okay, you know what, I need to keep my emotions in check, I can't bring this with me to a call and get upset with someone else for my own problems. Because now I'm going to a call where that could potentially rub off on someone else and now they have a negative connotation of dealing with the police. When they were just asking and looking for help, right? So understanding and acknowledging these emotions can impact others and their own day to day lives. So once we understood that, now it's understanding on how to negotiate with these social situations. Dealing with their emotions, how not to let those emotions bring up our own emotions and push it over the edge. And trying to get an understanding and it goes back into that de-escalation talk, which they've all been trained in. You know, that thought, emotion and behavior, once you realize who you're talking to, what kind of situation you're dealing with. You know, someone can be calling the police for one specific reason, but then now you get there and now you're having a good dialogue with this person. Now you're understanding that, hey, you know what, this this person is going through a hard time, they need more resources than just me showing up. And just trying to end the call, right, it goes beyond that, it goes extending our resources that we know. And helping them get to a successful life or a successful outcome, not just for today, but for the rest of their life, for the rest of the time that they need it, right? So we've already touched on the goals part of that and that was the main part of what this was. My screen is being weird here. And the personal objectives that they wanted us to take from this was to basically personally know ourselves. Know what pushes us, know what we can tolerate, know what we can't handle. You know, sometimes as officers, we tend to think that we can be Superman and or Superwoman and just kind of be out there and. Take on everything and push our own stuff to the side, but that's not healthy for us and we need to be able to understand, hey, what's our limit here? Maybe we need to go decompress ourselves and let someone else take this one. Once we understand that, we can understand with the other previous tools that we can de-escalate situations. Having a one on one conversation with the person, actually speaking to a person, person to person and not necessarily in an authoritative figure. You're able to probably get better outcomes, more dialogue from that person you're dealing with. And in turn, you're going to be able to get community trust, because if you're doing things the way that they're teaching you to do it. You know, speaking to a person as if they want to be treated that way, you're going to build that trust, not with just them. But they're going to go out and tell other people that, hey, you know what, I dealt with this officer from here. He listened to everything I had to say, he wasn't judgmental or anything like that and then you're going to get. And then you're going to get other people that are going to be able to trust you. Um, and so it talks about not just utilizing that for a call, but just living that lifestyle. Um, always doing that. Cause once, if you get in the habit of doing these things, you're continuously going to do it. And it's just going to be what people need and what you need. I think that's it for that. So, um, with that being said, there were built-in training scenarios and that there were videos, um, that they had to watch. Uh, there was open dialogue and discussion. Uh, they were given handouts on how to base, basically what are things that upset them? Uh, not just in life, but in the field. Uh, they were given scenarios on basically in a PowerPoint format that we all went over and basically had open discussions about it. I believe there was about four of those scenarios. Um, very long in-depth ones, uh, that they had to go through. Um, trying to think of anything else. There was a lot of, uh, hands-on stuff besides scenario-based training with this. There was a lot of, uh, there's a lot of tips and tricks that they kind of give us. They give us something known as the ladder concept, um, that for better or worse, it's basically a ladder placard, um, that we actually have a poster on that we're going to hang up eventually. Um, that basically people should keep themselves in check on, um, you know, where are you at on that ladder? Are, are you at the top where, you know, you're happy, you're feeling very content? Or are you at the bottom, uh, of that ladder? And they give, I think there's about 20 different examples of things on that ladder that they give. But it's, it's a good checking system to kind of realize when you go out on the road before you go to that call, looking at that ladder, seeing where you are. And then, hey, you know what? All right. I gotta figure out how to get to the top of my ladder. So that way I don't influence somebody else's day based on how I'm feeling. So it just kind of goes, this whole training for racial intelligence was just basically a person-to-person, uh, chat, how to talk to people. Um, and I think that's something that every officer can utilize and use. Uh, in addition to all the other trainings that they've gone to, it's just basically refining those skills. Tom?
Yeah. And, uh, the officer, I'm sorry, the racial intelligence training really combined a lot of the topics that we had already kind of built upon leading into that, you know, the implicit bias, it, it discussed, uh, harassment and discrimination, duty to intervene. Um, policeman misconduct, uh, unprofessional behavior, all, all the things that um, we had touched upon in all the other trainings all kind of got rolled into this one as well. And, um, the officers really learned how to recognize what those implicit biases are that they may have, or how things are affecting them on a personal level. And, and not letting those things affect their professional performance out in, in the field and, uh, in their interaction with the public. But it also kind of gave them a chance to, to recognize when others are having those same things, uh, same situations going on with them. Uh, in terms of the people that they're interacting with on a daily basis. And, you know, so that, oh, this person's really, as Ali had said, this person's at the bottom of their ladder and how I approach this could be critical. You know, so just recognizing those, uh, um, attributes and behaviors, uh, will hopefully improve how officers interact with people on a daily basis. And that lack ladder plaque, placard that Ali had talked about, that's one of the tools that's, uh, available in, in the small kit that goes with the officer. And they could take it out, put it right in their squad and have it with them on a, on a daily basis so that they can have a reminder of, okay, where am I at? Emotionally, where, where is this person that I'm dealing with? Where are they at emotionally? And, uh, how is that going to affect our interaction with this, uh, situation that we are dealing with? So it, it was, it was a very, very interesting training, uh, to go through. And, um, it, it was one that I actually really enjoyed when I had the chance to go through it.
Um, you know, one of the other concepts that they talked about in there, each of these, uh, have their own concepts. They all intertwined with each other like Tom had said. Um, and that's the great thing about these trainings is that it's not just something separate that every person has to remember or memorize. They all build on each other and they all actually build on the training that everybody's received through the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Standards Board. It's just that different companies have labeled it different ways and they have their own take on it, which are all actually helpful for us. Um, you know, one of the things that they talk about in there is called blockhead syndrome, which is understanding when you aren't getting through to your, the person that you're dealing with, and you're now amping yourself up and now you're serving to actually escalate a situation. And you are not listening or taking into consideration any of these cues that the person that you're dealing with is trying to give you or other people in the area. And that's where Tom had said, it's actually very crucial that other officers realize when this blockhead syndrome is going into effect, that you can actually tap out, which is similar to what we talked about with the officer override. Tap them out and get in there and, you know, help de-escalate that situation further. Um, so with this training and specifics, uh, this is going to now be put on through the entire North Shore Police Departments. Uh, we were the first agency to do this. Uh, because of that, I am spearheading this with, uh, two other officers from Glendale. Um, and it's now going to be put on, I believe for three days, starting next month. And during those three days, it's going to be, they're trying to fit everybody through the North Shore, uh, through there. So um, you know, I think we were a little ahead on the curve with some of these things, which was very good. Uh, it gives us, uh, basically a good head start on how to get these things out, because these aren't things that is just a one and done training. These are things that are going to be annually incorporated into other trainings. Whether they're standalone, uh, the fair and impartial policing will have to be standalone. Uh, the de-escalation can be integrated with other trainings that we do. Um, and the right, uh, training can actually be a standalone or actually integrated with other trainings as well. So that's pretty much all I have on the four topics. Tom, unless there's anything else you need me to add for this.
Yeah, it just to clarify a little bit with the fair and impartial police and training, why it's a standalone is it's, it's a copyrighted training and we have to uh, go through the material that they provided, um, basically to the letter that we can't deviate from any of that. So that's why it has to be a separate standalone training, but um, you know, this is something like Ali said, that this isn't just a, okay, we did it, check the box, move on. All right. We plan on continuing to refresh and, and rebuild upon, uh, all of this training that we've already laid the groundwork for. And it's something that we recognized, um, early on, I, I, you know, like I said, back in 2018, I, I came with this idea of, hey, I know these people who do this training. It's a great training. I'd like to bring it here. I'd like to put, put our officers through it, uh, not because, uh, that there was some issue or problem that we recognized within the department, but just recognizing that this is a, a, a skill that our officers need. And it's, it's, it's a, it's a tool they need in their toolbox that they need to bring out with them on a daily basis to, to go out and interact and do the job the best way that they possibly can. And, you know, and to recognize that they yes, everyone in the world has, has an implicit bias of some sort and know what those are and don't let it affect how you interact with people. How you, you go about doing your daily job. And this is something that's very important, uh, to me as an individual with, uh, within this police department. And it's something that I plan on stressing, you know, for as long as I am here, uh, to continue to roll this training out, to keep building upon the things that we've already started.
Agreed. I think that's all I got.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Um, it looks like you're working from home today. Um, Officer Gavani, so thank you for that. Um, Rebecca, am I correct that you wanted an hour for the ARPA item?
Yes. So we're, we're not at time.
Okay. Um, so yeah, we don't have time for, um, questions and discuss question tonight. Um, so if anybody has questions for follow-up, please, um, submit them in writing. Um, I will however, if, if anyone on the board wants to make a brief comment or, um, I I just want to say thank you and I really, um, appreciate all the work that you're doing and the leadership. Is there any other trustees that would like to make a brief comment? I'll, uh, entertain that at this time and then we'll move on to the second item. Trustee Stokran?
Uh, I would just like to thank Officer Gavani and, uh, Acting Chief Leventhal. I, I did a walk-around with Officer Gavani in a snowstorm about about this time last year, right?
That's right. Yeah.
Um, and I just, I appreciate, uh, your leadership and also Lieutenant Leventhal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Oh, I see hands. Okay. Um, Arthur Wesley and Jim.
Thank you. I'll, I'll keep it short, but I just wanted to say thank you guys for, for putting in the time and energy into this work. It's, it's absolutely crucial for, for our community. And, uh, you know, I, I'm very appreciative that, that you've taken the initiative and gone uh, above and beyond, uh, what you've been asked to do. So, um, you know, I, I'm very appreciative to that. Thank you so much for, for all you're doing right now on, on these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I, I think I'm next. Um, first of all, Officer Gavani, Captain, Captain Leventhal, thank you so much for, uh, for, for tackling these issues and making sure that training is incorporated, uh, into the culture of the department. That's crucially important. I really appreciate uh, your, your proactive approach here, um, cause it certainly has added value. One, one thing I will say, I, I, I plan to ask the question of kind of, you know, looking at it prospectively, uh, what's planned down the line for six months, a year, two years, and just really being on top of, you know, and you touched on it, you touched on it quite a bit, you know, what we've done and what we're going to do. But just really putting together a really straightforward timeline of kind of where the training is and where we're going with it. So that's going to be a question I do ask, but I wanted to, I wanted to, uh, uh, commend you for, uh, for making sure that this training is, is part of what we're doing and, um, look forward to it continuing to be a part of what we're doing.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to echo what, uh, trustees or sync and, um, uh, Warren had to say, thanks for taking, but thanks for doing the work. Thanks for taking the time to share it with us. I, I, I think this is a great story and definitely something I I think we'd want to share with the broader community as well, just in terms of what, what the department is going to, uh, work in this area. So thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other hands. Um, so we will move on to, um, good night and thank you very much for your time. And we'll move on to item number two, American Rescue Plan Act, um, project update.
All right. Thank you guys. Have a good night.
Good night.
Ready?
Yeah.
All right. Um, this, this is kind of our second official review on this topic back in September. Early September, we outlined a number of the considerations for eligibility for, uh, compliance with issues related to the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, grants that the, the village is receiving. Uh, we identified a, a number of items that were staff believe were, were good candidates for consideration, uh, down the future, a part of the future is, is this evening. Um, to utilize these funds in a way that is beneficial to, to the community and, and adds value to, to what we're doing. Um, you know, tonight we're, we're recommending that the village board consider, uh, taking, uh, two steps towards, uh, um, putting those, uh, grant funds to use, uh, for the village. Um, one of those is to, uh, initiate the process of purchasing the village's own street sweeper. Um, the memo outlines the, what, what we believe are the, the benefits of doing that. And the, the second item is considering, uh, designating use of these funds to acquire uh, two new leaf, uh, collection, uh, vehicles. Um, this is again, a significant upgrade from the draw behind the vacuum tubes that we're currently using to, to collect leaves in the community. Uh, and staff has also added some, um, uh, potential benefits that we believe come from that course of action. Should the board approve of that uh, later on this evening? So, uh, I, I think the important part of that is to begin this discussion. I believe I see Leanne on the screen. If you have specific operational questions on that. Or, uh, again, just to kind of process through, uh, this topic and, and, and determine if we're ready to start moving forward on some of these actions.
So what I'm hearing is you'd like questions, um, from the trustees at this time, um, in order to sort of get a sense of whether we're feel comfortable moving ahead later this evening as agenda.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah. And to give other thoughts.
Okay. All right. Trustee Stokran.
Thank you. Lower my hand before I forget. Um, so, uh, what a wonderful situation to be in, right? It's like, uh, Christmas came early and here we've got this pile of cash. Um, I have tried to clarify with Finance Director Emanuelson, we cannot give everybody a Christmas gift of a tax refund or something. I mean, we are limited by what we can do by the, the federal law. So um, we would be replacing, we share one street sweeper now with Whitefish Bay. Um, and I was told, I called earlier today, I believe Mark said that that was due for replacement in 2024. And we would be replacing two or three, um, right now, the, the leaf vacuums we use are pulled behind another vehicle. And we would be upgrading, I mean, I don't know how much do those cost? We'd be going from a pull behind to an actual truck for each of them, which would, is my understanding, require less staff. So instead of two people, one person drives the vehicle, one stands with a vacuum. We would be upgrading to where it's an all-in-one. It'd be one, a one-person operation instead of two. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Leanne. And, um, so how many of the vacuum pull-behinds would we, would we decommission them all? There's two or three?
There are, there are currently three fully pull behind, excuse me, or trailer units. That is correct. Um, they're all, um, very close to the end of their useful life.
And so does the, does the vacuum for the, for the person to do this from the vehicle? Do they, does the, does the vacuum, is it something that comes over the front of the truck or do they have a great mirror system? So you can see what you're vacuuming?
I would actually defer the answer on that question, if you don't mind, to Joel. He is much more familiar with this type of equipment and has some experience with it, um, in the, from past, past lives. So, um, if he wants to jump on, I think he, he would give you a much better answer than I, than I would.
Uh, good evening. I am here. Uh, so I actually got a, a picture. So I don't know if I can, if I can, if you can see that on my screen.
I can. It's like the biggest vacuum I've ever seen.
Yeah. So, um, it's an automated, um, collection vehicle, much like we have with our garbage trucks. Um, the hose is, uh, manually or operated from the driver's seat through hydraulics. Um, you know, like, just like several of our garbage trucks and, um, it's really takes a two-man process and brings it to a one-man process. Um, so, um, yeah, I mean, it's, uh, these vehicles have come out the last couple of years. I know there's a few communities that are starting to switch to them. Um, and, you know, it seems to be the latest, um, the latest, uh, efficient, uh, method in collecting leaves. So.
And so I guess my question is, when I was at the Wisconsin League of Municipalities, all the workshops talking about the federal funds was how are you collaborating? Make sure you collaborate with other communities, knowing that we'd be I don't know, what would we do with the joints? You know, I don't know. We don't do a lot of collaboration with Whitefish Bay. At this point, we have the trash compactor and we have this joint street sweeper. Could I feel confident that we've done the best we can to collaborate with municipalities around me and purchasing this new equipment just for our use?
Um, I, I, I can start and, and Joel can jump in. Um, I think that, you know, we, we make every attempt or many, many attempts to, to work collaboratively with our surrounding communities, particularly the North Shore communities. Um, but it's really a challenge to jointly own or use equipment that is seasonal. Um, because when we need the equipment, so do they. Um, our leaves fall the same period of time that their leaves fall. So, um, when we're talking about very highly specialized seasonal equipment, um, the ability to jointly own or share that equipment is, is highly limited. Um, so there really is no opportunity for the leaf, um, vehicles. Um, I would, just to be I would, just to be very clear, the sweeper that we're talking about purchasing is a mechanical sweeper. That actually is different than the, this sweeper that we currently own with Whitefish Bay. And that is a regenerative air sweeper. They function differently. They really are for very different purposes. The sweeper that we share with Whitefish Bay is the type of sweeper that the village needs to utilize to obtain maximum TMDL credits for its street sweeping operations, which is great. But it's not, you know, it's not the type of machine that can pick up large piles of debris or large objects. A mechanical sweeper, broom sweeper is much better designed to do that. So at this particular point in time, we really are looking at, I should say, our staff's preference would be that the village maintain ownership of one and one half sweepers. The mechanical sweeper would be utilized on a daily basis for leaf collection. In certain instances relating to construction debris, you know, sometimes we get called out if there's an accident by the police department to do cleanup in an intersection or areas. You know, when we have a large storm and there's a lot of tree debris, the regenerative air sweeper is not very efficient at removing that debris. A mechanical broom sweeper is.
So the new one does not necessarily help us with the TDML?
It does not from a street sweeping point of view. It does from a leaf collection process and operation, which I can understand why that might seem confusing that it does for one and not the other. But when you consider the fact that, you know, you can see a leaf or you can see a pile of leaves, but you're typically not going to see sediment or phosphorus. So the regenerative air sweeper is really more of a finely, it's purpose is to pick up fines and particles. The mechanical broom sweeper is for much larger items, debris, leaf piles, et cetera.
Okay. And then I guess my final point was looking at the list of other future considerations. I don't feel like, you know, I have concerns about committing to these things unless knowing, because I sure like a lot of things on the other future considerations list. I like the customer service lobby idea, the lead lines, replacing lead lines for the village and possibly the community schools. And then, of course, the parking lots. And I would, I would be hesitant to commit to these three items unless I knew, I would need the context because I don't feel like I can be a wise shopper until I've known what's all on my shopping list and what they cost. And finally, I would say we all need to be aware of the fact that we could take this money and use it toward lead service lines. But there is some possibility of that coming, you know, for individual residents, which is a $30 million, I believe, I talked to Mark today, a $30 million liability for the village owner, property owners. But that could be coming in the infrastructure package. I just, I think we need to be very mindful that we've got this money and it's very tempting to just, you know, I think these are wonderful, these would all would be wonderful things to have. The final thing is, we don't know where our DPW will be in two years. We have to go through a whole process to figure out where efficiencies lie. And I think it's pretty early to do that. Thank you.
Trustee Warren?
Thank you. First off, I want to acknowledge and recognize that trustee Stockbrand makes very good points on kind of knowing what we're kind of comparison shopping. But, I mean, as I turn this over in my head, I just, I just think of the efficiency that we gain by replacing, by changing our leaf collection methods. And that does give me some comfort in the recommendation here. You know, taking a two man, two man time consuming, two person time consuming job down to one is really, it's quite a leap in efficiency for the department. The one thing I wanted to ask, and I think I probably know the answer to this, and the answer is no. But I feel like I have to ask it. You know, at the last Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we removed several items from this year's budget. Is there any way that these funds could be, these funds could be used to place those items back in the budget or is it just not allowed under the grant?
Well, you know, the last Budget and Finance Committee meeting, the Budget and Finance Committee decided to recommend to the board this evening to remove a number of items from the 2022 budget. Just looking at that, that list, you know, I think you're right. The answer is that it's just not the same type of qualified expenditures that the grant is designed to support, so.
I had, I had to ask. It would have been kind of an easy way to put that stuff back, but yeah, I thought that would be the answer, unfortunately.
Okay, trustee Earthink, I think was next, or was it trustee Arndorfer?
Trustee. Trustee Arndorfer.
Trustee Warren's last question was one I wanted to ask, so thank you for asking it. I just had a couple of small clarifying questions. I recognize the answer on some of these might not be attainable right now, but I guess just, you know, are we just, you know, in order? Do we have any idea what kind of, you know, can we quantify at all the, you know, labor costs we'd be looking at reducing here? You know, what, if any changes with this lead, you know, cause for, you know, the way people rake their leaves, I mean, or, you know, what would the impact on residents be in terms of, you know, how, would they have to change up how they do things? Just to understand that. And, you know, is there, given supply chain issues, any idea whether we're seeing an extended lead time on these sorts of vehicles? And then, you know, finally, can we quantify the kind of impact, you know, these vehicles will have on our, on reducing TDMLs? Thank you.
I can take a stab at those. So for the last maybe 10 years or so, we have utilized temporary labor sources to supplement our leaf collection crews. So on an annual basis, and it does vary some, but I would say we are generally in the neighborhood of $10,000. Or at least that's what we, you know, strive for, for that temporary labor cost. So that, that part of it can be quantified. As I understand it, the resident impact related to their, their portion of their contribution to leaf collection would be relatively unchanged. It would be very similar to how those vax would be able to operate now. I would say that, and Joel can certainly jump in here. You know, when we have someone behind the truck, you know, they, they may see things or be able to perhaps get a little closer to the sidewalk than the automated arm maybe. But, but I, based on what I believe, I know, I don't, I don't think that's a significantly impactful difference to, you know, the raking time or raking that residents would do. Joel, do you have any thoughts on that?
I would anticipate no changes from the residence's contribution to leaf collection. The vehicle could ultimately be, ultimately be specified out that, you know, different reach for lengths of arms and all that stuff. So I would anticipate no changes from a residence's perspective.
And do you have any, in your conversations with suppliers, any, any thoughts or comments on the vehicle lead times?
Well, as, as everybody knows, acquiring goods is getting harder and harder these days and it takes longer and longer. I think we're looking probably, I'm hopeful that if, you know, if this was to go through, that the equipment could be ordered and we would have it in time for leaf season 2022.
I actually would like to add further to my comment related to labor cost earlier. As I mentioned, we, we try to hire three temporary seasonal employees. And when that is the case, that cost equals approximately $10,000. I would say, and I think Joel would heartily agree, that the last several years, that's a bit of a hit or miss operation. So more than likely at any point during the week, there is at least one day, perhaps two or more, where we, for whatever reason, don't have three temporary seasonals that have reported for work on any given day. When that is the case, they are supplemented with members of our staff. So typically what that means is that, you know, a building maintenance person is doing leaf collection or are one of our employees from the mechanic's garage supplements leaf collection. Occasionally, we will pull someone from the utility to do that. So that cost is a little more difficult to quantify. But, you know, in addition to, there is a dollar cost. Most certainly, there is a lost opportunity cost there. If we have someone behind that leaf back, they're not doing their, their tasks for the day, you know, to maintain village property. So then the last question was the ability to quantify the impact on TMDL for the implementation of this new equipment. That is actually, that that is difficult to do in certain senses. The DNR measures the village's TMDL reductions based on a model that is widely accepted and is used. And that model includes multiple variables and inputs. There has been talk in recent years about adjusting the variables on the model as they relate to leaf collection. Currently, that option is not available. So there are not multiple variables that you can input for leaf collection. The fact that you do it is basically your only variable. So from a reporting standpoint, implementation of new, more efficient equipment wouldn't necessarily change the village's TMDL obligations. But from a reality standpoint, an altruistic standpoint, a doing the right thing standpoint, this more efficient operation with equipment, particularly with the mechanical leaf sweeper, would, would definitely improve the amount of leaf debris that ends up in our waterways.
Thank you very much for the responses.
Trustee Earthink.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, you know, I think some of the other trustees, you know, some of my questions were answered, but this is a really exciting opportunity for DPW. I know that our budgets are pretty tight and, and a lot of the times, a lot of our public works projects get kind of looked at with a, you know, with a magnifying glass in our budgets. So to be able to purchase these, these three pieces of equipment is really exciting because if we needed to purchase it within our budgets, it might be, it might be really tough in the next five to, you know, seven years. So this is an exciting opportunity. You know, one of my questions is, where are you going to put these vehicles? Because I know.
I think you're on mute.
That whole time?
Oh, just for the end.
Okay.
Your driveway.
My driveway. Well, I'm close to DPW, so Leanne, if you need my driveway, it's very narrow, but as long as I get my, my stuff swept up first, we're all good. But no, I just, you know, I assume that DPW has, has the space for these vehicles or you're going to be getting rid of other vehicles?
I don't, I'm not probably familiar with Joel, with the dimensions of this equipment and how that relates to the current leaf pull behind leaf backs. Certainly they're bigger. They're, they're, they're on chassis, they're drivable. But yeah, that, that's definitely something that we are going to have to do a little bit of rearranging, moving, jockeying. But yeah, yes, that will be, I think they will be slightly larger in size than the current unit.
And then what about, like, you know, Joel, have you seen one of these up close? And, you know, I'd just love to know more about the ease of use. Is it, is it going to be easy for, for somebody to be able to drive down the streets and use this, this thing without, without a helper? And will they need training?
Yeah, so we, a couple of months ago, we went and there was like, one of the vendors was putting on a you know, kind of a demo, if you will. So we went and looked at that and got a chance to actually operate it. I mean, it's just going to be just like anything. I mean, there's a learning curve to it. You know, I made the comparison to our automated garbage trucks. You know, an operator is going to have to, you know, take the time to learn how to do it. You know, but it's, it shouldn't take anybody that long to really get the hang of it. You know, one of the things that, I'm just going to put a little plug in here for, for this, then one of the issues is that, that, you know, the leaf collection process is, you know, from a DPW's perspective is a very trying, stressful season because it's amazing how everybody's, you know, residents put a lot of work into getting their leaves in these piles. And, and it's our job to make sure that, you know, everything is collected in a timely manner. And it's very difficult to do that with the equipment we have. And one of the issues is very, it's also very labor intensive. So, you know, operating the leaf back on a manual basis and it's, it's hard to get people to get really excited about working really crazy hard and physically labor for eight hours, right? So, you know, this is an opportunity to reduce workplace injuries. You know, I, we can, you know, eliminate the use of the struggles of finding temporary help at $15 an hour every year, which is becoming almost impossible these days, you know? So there's a lot of those things go away with this advancement in this equipment. And, you know, like I said, as far as the operating goes, it shouldn't be anything our full time people shouldn't be able to do.
That's good. Well, thank you guys. And again, this is exciting for the department and look forward to seeing, hopefully seeing these things in 2022. So thank you so much.
Kathy, I see your hand, but I just wanted to check in with the other trustees to see if they have any questions first. Then we can go around again if we need to. Trustee Baldoff or trustee Bachhorst, do you have any questions?
I do not. President McCullough McGee.
I don't either.
Okay. Yeah, I really appreciate all the questions. So they answered a lot of my questions. As far as I have one, in terms of my understanding, when our previous discussion was that there was enough ARPA funding to acquire these vehicles and do the other things that are under future considerations. We were just prioritizing these because of the lead time with purchasing and wanting to have them on board for next season. Can you say whether that's correct or am I misunderstanding?
I can, I can give you my perspective. You know, and I start with pretty basic plus, pluses and minuses on the math. You know, if this is approved and we move forward with the other projects already identified, you know, after this has been completed, we will still have about $460,000, $462,000 of ARPA grant funds to continue to utilize, you know, for identified purposes, some of which may be the items in this memo. You know, the customer service lobby efforts, we really don't have a good handle on on the estimated costs on that at this point, which is again, you know, one of the reasons that that's for a future discussion. And the the villages, municipal and community, public and private school-led service lines, you know, we've begun looking at those issues, trying to identify again, you know, what would be the potential cost if if we move through certain steps of those processes. I I would be surprised if the combination of both of those steps, as 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 I currently understand them, would would exceed $100,000 all, you know, combined. So that basically leaves $360,000. I've had, I I'd be a little surprised if they exceeded about $60,000, but I'm trying to hedge my bets here. So even if they cost $100,000 combined, that still leaves $360,000 to contribute towards either green infrastructure contributions or or other efforts that the board may identify as we go through this process. So, you know, we do have significant resources for green infrastructure from MSD, but we also have three significant, well, three projects that could benefit from using those resources. And with the upcoming alley projects, you know, it becomes a, it's always a continuum of, you know, what is practical to implement and then how much funding do we have available? So certainly, if we were not to entertain any other discussions, we would have, we would think in excess of $350,000 to contribute towards those efforts amongst those three projects. So I I feel pretty comfortable with that outline, and and that's again, you know, topic for discussion tonight and how does the board feel about that?
Okay, thank you. So I'll just say before I hand off the floor that I feel very comfortable with moving ahead to approve these purchases. The, you know, especially because it sets us up for next season. And these other items on the list are, you know, there is a TBD aspect to them. So they can come back in the future and we're not basically spending, we're not committing all the funds at this time. And also, previous to this meeting, we did go through a list and and, you know, this is reflective of what our recommendations and priorities were at that time as well. I'm just going to ask manager Ewald, do you have something? I see your hand.
Hi, yes, thank you. I wanted to just reflect on with the board, the the leaf vac and the equipment is coming to primarily because it's been something that's been identified within the DPW organizational analysis. So it was one of the top service areas because of the amount of time and and labor included. And one of, I mean, in the community that we live in, leafs are a big operation. It sounds simple, but it's been a major part of that discussion. So it was for the top service level areas that was identified not only by the consultant, but it was a top-tiered item within a scope of that study. So I just want to provide that contextual reflection with you in that, you know, we're we're mitigating steps to move forward with different aspects of that study. And this was one of the the service levels that was up at the forefront of that discussion. With regards to customer service in the front desk, this week, we will have through our building the the vendor that we're working with for our facility condition analysis for both Village Hall and Public Works, the Public Works complex following that. And in December, you'll be seeing an RFP for me for different modifications to the front desk at the Village Hall that would accommodate a more COVID-friendly environment. So I just wanted to let you know the timing of those and why they're staggered in the ways that they are and look forward to working with you on all of them moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Stokbrand and then trustee trustee Arndorfer, and then we should be wrapping up.
Thank you. I just want to confirm that if we do get the two new leaf vac trucks, we could eliminate a $10,000 cost for temporary help for leaf collection. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and I just want to also, so instead of two handheld vacs, we'd have these trucks with the robotics and the AI, the cameras, whatever. I'm assuming though, with the pace would be about the same because the good news is you save on staff, but the pace of the pickup would be about the same because you can only vacuum so fast.
I'll defer to public works on that.
Yes, I would agree with that statement.
Okay, and then finally, I just want to reiterate then, sort of to Rebecca's point, in terms of talking about what services we can continue to fund and afford to do in the village, we're going all in on leaf collection. So I can support this too, and I can make a motion, President McKay, if you need one.
Thank you. I I it's not, it's not agenda for consideration, it's an update.
The the action item is on the consent agenda to see if it means meeting if it's approved.
Oh. Got it. So do you need a motion from us right now?
I do not.
But I would think we would want something in a motion that has the prices for transparency.
Yeah, again, that that is a separate item on the consent agenda this evening. So I have rinsed and reused this this memo as a consent agenda item, depending on the outcome of this discussion, of course, which has a cost in the motion in the packet.
Thank you. Trustee Arndorfer?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry, another small question. Any perspective on the mission levels of these vehicles relative to, you know, vehicle now that we use now for this? Any improvements there on that front?
Joel, do you have any specific data?
Oh, you're you're muted, Joel, so. But between the trucks and the equipment, what's, what is your opinion?
Yeah, I'm sorry. While I don't have a you know, a good answer to that, because we really haven't dove into this yet, pending the outcome of this discussion. But anytime new equipment is purchased, there's new guidelines and federal standards for that equipment. So I I could only assume that the equipment that would be purchased would be a cleaner burning diesel than currently what we, what we use currently.
Thank you. And if if this goes through, I do look forward to, as someone who's blessed, uh, living on a corner, I do look forward to, uh, leaf season 2022. So thank you.
I have a quick question, just a clarification. The street sweeper, the current one is is slated to be replaced in the 2024 capital budget. This would, it won't be taken out of the 2024 budget, right? Because you want to replace the, we essentially want to have two different kinds of sweepers, right?
That would be correct.
Okay. Great, so if it doesn't sound like staff needs anything, what we need to do is decide how you're going to vote and maybe somebody will pull it from the consent agenda so that we can just, everybody can be clear on what they're, what actions being taken. Or if you, if everyone's in support of it as it's agendaed under the consent agenda, we don't have to pull it. So I'll just let.
Item five. Five L. And I can see where they could have a hard time tracking that down, but it's a, it's essentially the same memo that we we've got here at the cow. Simplify just a little bit.
And the costs are in there.
That's correct.
So great, are there any final comments? Trustee Stokbrand?
Just to be clear, in the minutes, if it's approved in the consent agenda, will the cost be in the item in the minutes?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
So any final comments or should we, I would also take a motion to adjourn and you can have a or break 7:30.
I'll move to to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, move to adjourn, motion to adjourn by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Warren. All those in favor, show of hands or voice.
Hi.
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 Okay, great. Motion carries, we are adjourned at 7:22 and be back here at 7:30.